Madam Secretary, would you take the role, please?
Yes, please.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
DJ, sorry.
Please let the record show that all planning commissioners are present with the exception of Chair Nelson and Vice Chair Donner will be the acting chair at this meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the minutes. I hear a motion.
I move that the minutes be approved as written.
Actually, can I request a revision so that they're approved as amended per today's email? There was a correction sent out.
Can I amend your motion?
Yes, I amend my motion to that.
Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous, except for Eric. Next, the public comments. Do we have anyone that's going to speak to the commission on anything that's not on the agenda? All right. Next, the consent calendar. We have nothing on the consent calendar. So, the public hearing. The, do we have a presentation?
Our first public hearing will be provided. A staff report from Danny Giometti.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman. Chairman Donner, who are we going with tonight? Fellow commissioners. The project for you this evening is a proposal to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling on a hillside condition lot with a roof deck and retaining walls exceeding 30 inches in height. So, this is the site. It's a 2,929-square-foot lot. It's located northwest of the intersection of Crystal Lantern and PCH. It's also within the RSF 22 zoning district within the Lantern Village. It's surrounded by a mixture of multiple-family duplex, single-family development, as well as structures ranging from one to four stories. And there was a previously-approved three-story, single-family dwelling that is currently under construction just north of the site, adjacent to it on the left of the screen there. And that was also utilized the city's hillside condition requirements. So, as I said, the lot is a previously vacant lot, and the proposal is for a new three-story structure to be developed. The topog- this is the topographic survey on the right there. As you can see, it's got some pretty significant topography, steep hillside. Picture on the left is of the lot there. And then, that image in the center is, again, a picture of the lot from Google. The lot contains a 45.15% slope, upslope from Manzanita. So, the project proposes the construction of a 2,190-square-foot, three-story, single-family dwelling with an attached 400-square-foot garage, a 167-square-foot roof deck, and perimeter retaining walls exceeding 30 inches in height. The lower floor includes a two-car garage, a downstairs laundry room, a private bedroom, and en suite, with an en suite bathroom and closet. The house also will include an elevator and internal staircase to access all the floors. The second floor, or main entry, main living area, that would contain the kitchen, the dining, and main living area, and also provide direct access to a 149-square-foot deck facing Manzanita Drive. There's also an additional bedroom with an en suite bathroom, as well as an office/bedroom off of a hall bath. The upper, or third, floor is accessed via the interior stairwell or the elevator, and that serves the master bedroom with the en suite, with an en suite bathroom, a walk-in closet, and there's also a private outdoor garden with an exterior shower to the left of it. And from the third floor, you can also, I'm sorry, from the third floor, there's access to a 460-square-foot deck off the front, and then, there's an additional stairway that provides access to the roof deck that's proposed. These are the development standards, and as you can see from the table on the screen, the project implies with all the applicable development standards. That includes yard setbacks, lot coverage, height limit, parking, et cetera. So, a site development permit is required for three different things for this project. Number one, as I said earlier, it's to utilize the hillside condition ordinance. Number two, it's for the proposed roof deck on the house, and also for increased retaining wall heights. So, this is a section through on the right of the site, as well as another image of the survey there on the left. As you can see, the low point to high point is outlined in red there. The zoning code states that residential structures proposed in a hillside condition can have this, can have additional height. And as I said in the earlier slide, this lot contains a significant slope. It's a 45% slope, so therefore qualifies for the hillside condition ordinance. These are the elevations for the site. The design utilizes three stories, as I said, and does have increased height. The structure incorporates both a 612-pitch roof element, as well as a roof deck, and is designed with a maximum allowed 33-foot to the top of the 612 pitch and 29-foot limit to the roof deck, respectively. The proposed dwelling has been designed in compliance with all provisions identified in the hillside condition ordinance, including maximum floor-to-area ratio, setbacks at upper levels, height above upper property line, and results in an overall reduction in grading. So, this is the roof deck that's proposed. As you can see on the left, that's the area in yellow, and then, on the right is a rendering showing where that roof deck area will be. Pursuant to the roof deck requirements in the zoning code, the permitted area of all roof decks per dwelling unit may not exceed 25% of the roof area of the story directly below the deck, or 300 square feet, whichever is less. This particular roof deck is 160 square feet, 167 square feet. It comprises 21% of the roof area of the story directly below the deck, so is therefore under 300 square feet. It's also designed to not be visible from all sides of the structure or the grade below, and is integrated into the proposed roof framing within the required, and is within the required 42-inch-high guardrail requirements for building code. All visible portions, as I said earlier, are architectural, they're integrated and architecturally compatible with the proposed structure, and access to the roof deck is taken via an exterior stairway from the third-floor deck. The proposed roof deck's designed in accordance with the size and design limitations required pursuant to the roof deck requirements. These are the proposed retaining walls on-site. As you can see, the retaining wall plan on the left, and then, the landscape plan on the right, both indicate the walls in green being the perimeter or site walls, and then, the walls that are shown in red are your terrace/landscape walls. The, both perimeter walls, they start within the public right-of-way, which will require an encroachment permit for those portions, and they will climb either side of the lot to the top and terminate at the back where the stairs for access to the backyard and to the inside of the house are located. That's on the left-hand side there. At the highest point, the wall will approximately be, the wall will approximately be 11 feet, and, I'm sorry, a height of nearly 15 feet, down to the lowest point of a height of nearly two feet. The two feet being at the front of the property and the 15 feet being at the back. Lastly, there's four-stepped retaining walls in red, which are shown here. They face Manzanita, and they are proposed between the western property line and the house. The proposed house will block the tallest portions of all retaining walls, which will limit the views along Manzanita Drive, and all walls will be finished with smooth stucco matching the lighter-colored portions of the proposed house. There's also going to be a condition in the permit that requires landscape screening is included on portions of the retaining walls that would be visible facing Manzanita Drive. And, as I said earlier, an encroachment permit for the portion of the walls located within the public right-of-way will also be required, and that will also be a condition in the report, or in the resolution. The design of the walls is consistent with the design similar to other projects on Manzanita Drive and throughout the rest of the city. This is the rendering of what the home will look like. It mimics a modern architectural style. It incorporates a mixture of white smooth stucco, distressed linear brick, and natural wood siding exterior walls. There's also a black metal trim and natural wood soffits proposed along the roof. All the openings will include black metal-framed doors and the windows and natural wood garage, I'm sorry, the openings include black metal-framed doors and windows, and then, there will be a natural wood color garage door, as well as the gates and fences also being in a natural wood color. There will also be a tempered glass guardrail for all decks and structures for stairways accessing the dwelling. These are just some additional pictures from a bird's-eye view of what the, what the home will look like. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
We have any questions for Danny?
The only one I had was, I saw in the photo, though, that the rear sideyard walls, are they extending into that easement for SD or SC DW? Water District.
The Water District easement? Portions are, and there's a condition highlighting within the report from engineering that they have to have release of that easement to be able to place the walls there, or an agreement from the utility company.
Okay. Mr. Opal? Mr. Dingra? The 15-foot wall is not visible from the street?
Correct. That portion is located further to the back on the, in this picture, it would be on the left-hand side, and the, and that does provide access to that stairway there, but no, it would not be visible from the street.
And the bedroom on the first floor, the lowest floor, is there window area in that?
I believe there is. I'd have to take a look at the floor plan, but the building code requires that there be access, window access.
All right. There's no other questions, then we'll open to the public. Do we have any comments? Steven Perdoux?
Sure. Which image in particular? This one's good? Okay. No problem.
Above it, 25171 V. Olivato. And on the right there, there's a big circle on the top there. That's the drain that they clean out twice a year, and they come through my property to get to it. I just want to make sure that when we do this, we don't put up a green construction fence like we did next door, so nobody can access that for, like, the next two years. I want to make sure, like you did, to either from down there or from my property, I don't care which one. I just want the utility to be able to clean that drain. Thank you. That's, because that's important. I wanted to make sure it happens.
Thank you. We have any other speakers? Okay, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commissioners for comments. Mr. Opal?
I'll go.
I see, we have, we'll reopen the public comments for Austin Peters.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Safety Commissioners, my name is Austin Peters. I'm the architect and represent the property owner. If I could address the neighbor's concern, would that be okay?
Sure.
It's my understanding that an agreement will be formed with the property owner and the water company that access will be, be able to be maintained through our property, actually, to be able to access that even when the property is, both during and after construction. That agreement hasn't been formed yet, but it's my understanding that that's the condition of approval, that access be maintained both during construction and once occupied. Just thought I would clarify that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peters. Okay, now, I'll close the public hearings again and open it up for commissioner comments. Mr. Opal?
All right. So, I was out at the site, actually, just earlier today, took a look at it. Hillside lots are very difficult to develop, and this one is extremely narrow, so really appreciate the architect and the owners' care in their design, and see no issues with it, and I'm fully supportive of it.
Thank you. Mr. Gaber?
Yeah, I concur with Commissioner Opal. I would also, you know, my concerns are with the neighbor in that ensuring that that outlet can be maintained is critically important, and also during construction, making sure that it is, that it doesn't get compromised is important. So, I'm sure that our Public Works Department and the Water District will be watching it closely, but I'm in support of the project.
Thank you. Mr. Dingra?
I support what Commissioner Kabard said, and also, I can make the findings that are required for the hillside.
Okay.
So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve the site development permit, SDP 21-0018.
I'll second that.
Any other comments? Then, let's vote. Okay, congratulations. Thank you very much. The next, the next item on the agenda, we're going to have a, Commissioner Opal will recuse herself since she's, lives next door. The next item is coastal development permit, CDP 22-0005, and site development permit, SDP 21-0013, to permit the construction of a third-story addition to an existing non-conforming three-story, single-family dwelling located on a lot with a hillside condition and administrative modification of standards AMS 21-0006, to permit a reduction in the setback for a proposed third-story deck associated with the proposed addition located at 34191 Blue Lantern Street. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. I'm Justin Polly, providing a staff report this evening.
Thank you, Vice Chair Donner. Thank you, commissioners. Hello, everyone. My name is Justin Polly, and I'll be presenting CDP 22-0005, site development permit 21-0013, and administrative modification of standards 21-0006. On behalf of the Planning Division staff. Start with the facility map for the project. You can see, it's a kind of a strange, irregular-shaped lot at the very end of Blue Lantern, where it almost borders Pacific Coast Highway. The zoning designation for the subject property is that of the residential, single-family seven zone. Existing surrounding conditions to the, to the front, to the project site would be existing single-family dwelling, some of which, along Blue Lantern at least, are existing three-story structures, single-family dwellings. So, entitlement permits required. We have three different entitlement permits for this project. One is a coastal development permit. This is simply required just because this addition is considered development within the non-appeals jurisdiction of the coastal overlay zone. In addition to that, we also have an administrative modifications of standards. This is for the third-story deck, which is being proposed right off the third-story addition, which is within, within the required setback for third-story additions. We also have a minor site development permit. There's multiple reasons why this is required. The third-story addition itself, being on a hillside lot, hillside lot condition, does require a site development permit. In addition, the main dwelling unit is non-conforming in a few aspects, including over height and deficient in the parking standard required for single-family dwellings. Here, we just have the existing conditions on-site. As you can see, garage is located as what's technically called the first floor or bottom floor of the structure. On top, we have a second floor, and then, we have kind of like an entryway to the right, and then, there is, basically, the third-story addition will be proposed right above the garage and existing second story there, towards the middle of the structure. Here, we have the site plan, kind of get a feel for the existing layout and the proposed layout of the additions. You can see there's 432 square feet being proposed there in the middle that would be considered the third-story addition. There's also a 28-square-foot kind of extension of a pantry area on the right, kind of bordering that, another adjacent property to the right-hand side there. The new addition will basically accommodate a new bedroom, a bathroom, and an office area. Here, we have the residential development standards that are applicable to RSF 7 zoning designation, in which the property is located with them. Although there are a few nonconformities to the project, all the new additions will comply with the current development standards of this zone. So, here we have, on the left, the second floor with the, with the existing deck, excuse me, there's an existing deck on the second floor, and then, the third floor with the addition and that deck. Now, that third-story deck is going to project out to be flush with the habitable portion of the second story below. For the site development permit, which is required for this project, there are certain findings that need to be met, or made to meet the hillside condition. I'll go through those very briefly for this project to show compliance. The first of which is that the lot must qualify for the hillside condition by having a 20% slope or greater. The slope on this property is just over 20%. The second would be that the three-story structure must be designed so that the third story has an average additional setback area of 10 times the total width, the structure, street elevation. So, in this case, it's just under 50 feet. It's 49 feet and 6 inches, that's the width of the structure on the, on Blue Lantern there. So, what's required per code would be a minimum of 495-square-foot setback for that addition and the deck. Now, the addition is actually exceeding that and pushing out to 590 square feet, whereas the deck is projecting slightly into that area, which is why the AMS is required, excuse me, the administrative modifications of standard is required for this project to deviate from that standard for the deck specifically. Third finding would be residential structures having three stories shall be limited to maximum floor area ratio of .75, the area of the lot. In this case, they're maxing out at 32%. Next finding would include building height. The maximum, the absolute maximum building height per the hillside condition would be 33 feet, obviously dependent on the roof pitch and compliance with the city's measurement of building height. What's being proposed here is going to be 28 feet 9 inches, as measured from the garage finished floor. And now, that's based on a pitch being less than 3/12, which the proposed third-story addition has, and so, that's compliant with that section of code as well. Moving forward here, the, I'm sorry. Massing must be reduced as much as possible. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. The next finding is actually not applicable to this project. The finding states the applicant shall demonstrate that the proposed design will result in reduction in grading and disruption of existing topography. There is no grading being proposed as part of this project. This is a second and third-story addition, not applicable. Next finding, the height of the third story shall not exceed 14 feet above the upper property line or upper street curb elevation as measured perpendicular to any point along said line of curb. If you kind of go back here to the site plan, you can see a note in the top right, it might be a little hard to see on the screen because it's small print, but it does note that the absolute highest point of the roof ridge for the proposed third-story addition will not exceed 14 feet above that rear elevation there. Compliant with that standard. And last of all, a story pole stacking plan is required. So, story pole stacking has existed on-site prior to this hearing taking place, and I do have pictures that will show evidence of that coming up here. Here, we can see some elevations. First elevation is just the left-hand side. It's the west elevation. To the right, you can see the front, if you will, which is facing Blue Lantern. That's the south elevation. You can see where there's a third-story addition. It's almost impossible to see the pop-out of the pantry, that's kind of shielded by the existing portion on the right-hand side of the residence, but you can see that there is a spiral staircase coming down for ground access to that third-story addition. Here, we have more elevations. North elevation is on the left, that's seen from the rear of the property, looking down towards Blue Lantern. To the right, we have the right-side elevation, and that's actually where you can see that other pop-out, which is technically the second story, as it's not located over the garage area. Again, that's for the pantry extension. These are just some pictures that I got off Google Images, basically, of adjacent properties. I have all them addressed here, and this is basically to show how the, why the AMS should be supported. Again, that's the administrative modification of standards to allow that deck, that third-story deck encroachment into that required setback area, as mentioned before. You'll see a number of houses, just, and this is just on Blue Lantern, every one, they all have, for the most part, third stories, and all of the decks are actually either flush with the deck below on the second story, or slightly pushed back, but not clearly in compliance with the hillside condition. And so, there is justification based on existing conditions to allow deviation, staff feels for this proposed third-story deck. Here, I have the story poles, just obviously showing the location of where that third-story addition and deck are going to be going. Again, the third-story addition is meeting the required setback based on the street frontage width of the existing structure, and then, the proposed third-story deck will be coming out to the edge of that, that build a footprint of the second story located below. In conclusion, new additions which are being proposed are meeting all applicable development standards of the residential, single-family seven zone. The third-story deck meets findings for approval of an administrative modification of standards, and the project meets all findings for the approval of a coastal development permit and a site development permit for the hillside condition, in addition to non-conforming structure. Staff requested the Planning Commission adopt the draft resolution approving coastal development permit, CDP 22-0005, and SDP 21-0013, and AMS 21-0006. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission?
This is where a process question, and it has to do specifically with this, this structure. Do we have a, do we have a problem with how we're defining the zone on Blue Lantern? Because if all of these houses have this condition to begin with, wouldn't it make more sense to just say, they've got, there's a special zone for Blue Lantern that allows for, you know, these, these decks to protrude, to extend further than they normally would in the zoning code, and therefore, they don't have to go through this AMS standard process? I'm just asking.
There we go. That would require an amendment to our zoning code to allow us to sketch out a portion of the town to create standards specifically to that zone. It would be unusual to have a zone and have a piece of the zone pieced out just for that purpose, but it's something certainly we can look into. As we look at streamlining our housing element, we talked about this before, identify as ways of streamlining new development, this could be something we could look at as part of that.
Thank you.
I have one question. It's, I just want some clarification relative to non-conformance. If you look at Table 1, Danny, under height, it says existing requirement is 31, and then, under proposed slash existing, it says 33.25. So, is 33.25 existing or proposed?
Yes, it is going to be, the 33 is the existing portion on the right-hand side of the structure, and then, the proposed is meeting the applicable code of 28.9. So, that is the, the 33 is the non-conforming existing portion there.
Okay. Thank you.
As a point of, point of clarification, on the landscaping requirement, on the chart says 25%, and then, it says 2%? Can you, is that, am I reading that properly? 25% there on the chart that you have?
In the staff report, it refers to 2%. It must be a typo.
That must be, sorry about that, yes.
Okay.
On the project plans, indicates the landscape coverage is 54%.
Thank you very much. And the, the project was approved in 2009 for two and three stories, and the third-story wasn't built at the time, so I'm assuming the founder- So I'm assuming the foundation would, was approved to support a third story?
I, to be honest, I'm not 100% sure how far the project went. I assume that it went through a plan check and those were, those details were looked at, but I can look into that and get back to you on that if you'd like.
Any type of structural needs related to the new development will be determined through the building permit process. So the foundation itself will be evaluated.
If we have no other comments, then I'll open it to the public. We have any speakers? Okay, then I'll close the public comments and bring it back to the commission.
I can make the necessary findings and I'd like to move approval of coastal development permit, CDP 22-0005, site development permit, SDP 21-0013, and administrative modification of standards, AMS 21-0006.
A second?
I'll second.
All right. All in favor? Okay, congratulations. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Next, old business, we have the short-term rental subcommittee update. Do you have a staff report on that? We have to bring Mary back. Commissioner Opel, your, your neighbor's project was approved. Okay, we'll come back to the, the subcommittee on short-term rentals.
Nothing new to report since our last meeting when I stated that we are hoping to hear from the coastal commission soon on our draft regulations.
Next, we have new business, the request for historical resource designation and participation in the Mills Act program at 33812 El Canado Historical Resource Application 22-0001. We have a staff report?
Yes, Senior Planner John Champa providing a staff report.
Good evening, planning commissioners. John Champa, I'm the case planner on the project, which is located at 33812 Allen Conto. The property was originally constructed in 1940. It is located in the RMF14 zoning designation within the Lantern District of the city. Property, just to give you a little background on it, it was most recently evaluated in 2019. And that historic evaluation, which was completed by Architecture Resources Group, or ARG, identified the property as unique and a potential historic resource for the city, based on it being a streamlined, modern design, which was popular during the depression era. Surprisingly enough, it is the only known example of this architectural style within the city. Then in addition to that, the, the features or character-defining features of streamlined modern during this time period is the horizontal massing, as well as the flat roof, stuccoed and rounded corners and curved wall ends, as well as metal windows and moldings and string courses to convey the streamlined, modern design. Based on the requirements of the city's historic preservation ordinance, there's specific criteria that need to be met to ensure that the project can be identified as a historic resource. And the minimum is three of the criteria, and this actually meets five. And first being that it is 82 years old. So here, you can see some images of the property. You can see that it does have this horizontal massing with the rectangular-shaped metal windows, as well as some of those architectural features like the string courses over the, over the door and, and some of the windows and the flat roof designs. So the 2019 report did identify these features as being preserved over the years and that there have been limited modifications to the property over the years with the conversion of the garage to a bedroom, which you can see on the front elevation, left-hand side, that larger window there was actually the location of the garage door. And then in addition to that, the property received a re-roof in 2009. The garage conversion was, I believe, in 1960. So the historic consultant evaluated these modifications and determined that the original integrity of the property is still there and the character-defining features of the property still remain for the streamlined, modern design. And with that, staff is recommending the property be added to the city's historic registry, as well as a recommendation be made to the city council for support in the property being added to the city's Mills Act program. So that concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the property owner are available for any questions.
Commissioner, questions? Nope. Okay, thank you. I'll open it for public comments. No public comments? I'll close it for public comments and come back to the commissioners for any other comments?
No, no comments, just very supportive of it, keeping it historic and keeping it close to the original looks.
It looked modern 82 years ago. Okay, with no other comments, then I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the Historic Resource Application, HRA 22-0001, and make recommendation to city council to
Authorize.
Approve, authorize the Mills Act.
Hey, second that.
All in favor? opposed? Okay, unanimous. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Okay. Now it looks like we have. Any other staff reports?
No other staff reports.
Any commissioner comments?
No comment.
Okay. Then with no comments, then meeting is adjourned.